Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled Council Mania in the Park City City Council on March 12th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Dee, would you call the roll?
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Con Howerton is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember Tom Jones is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Let's pray. Lord, we come before you this evening and we thank you for these men and women that serve this city and we pray, Lord, for grace and wisdom be upon them. We ask you, Lord, to be with those who protect this city and give them guidance and, Lord, as they lead through the -- to the future and, Lord, take care of issues and problems for the day, we just ask you to give grace and wisdom and bless this meeting. Lord, we love you in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. We don't have anything for rewards or presentation this evening and nobody signed up to speak at public forum, so we'll move on to staff reports and then we'll start with our Assistant City Administrator Dana Walden. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor Man. Just wanted to let the council and all of the citizens be aware that the week of March 25th, we should have the cards available for people to come first come, first served for cleanup purposes. So please be looking for that and let us know and we will get those cards out to you. Also wanted to let everyone know that our Central County Commissioner Lacey Cruz will be here and touring some of our city facilities on Thursday, the 21st. So she's very interested in what's going on in Park City. She's going to tour the building here, we're going to go over to the senior center, the library and just in general, take a tour of Park City. So we're looking forward to her being here at the city and very impressed by her interest in Park City. Answer any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Dana? Go ahead.
I'm just going to add to that. Lacey came out Saturday to a combos event and very well received. I am very pleased and impressed with the interest that she's taking in our city and to work together with her to make sure that we're getting the attention here that we need in Park City. She's very engaged in the senior services side and so we got a great senior center to be able to showcase to, so I'm excited about that and so thank you for working with her on getting that set up.
All right. Thank you Dana. Next, we'll hear from our Director of Public Works Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. The Parks Department did some upgrades in the community building, replacing some items in the restroom and we also replaced nine tables. They trimmed back and prepped some flower beds in City Hall and 61st Street median in preparation for spring. And they completed the installation of riprap on the shoreline of Chislin Point Pond. Street Department, they used approximately 40 tons of sand salt mixed during the last two -- last snow event and replaced outdated regulatory street signs. They also conducted numerous pothole repairs citywide. Modern Sewer Department installed seven new residential service connections, installed six sewer main taps and completed 141 water and sewer line locates for digging projects.
The work around the pond looked really, really pretty spot on.
Thank you. Yeah, I just checked it out. Yeah, it was very nice.
Yeah. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Eric? Ben?
Yeah, Eric, do you have one quick question over there on the Poston Park basketball goal court area? Do you know where we're at as far as how they're coming along with the striping and getting the goals up?
Yes, right now we're waiting for at least three days of 40 degrees or higher for them to paint the court. We're ready to install the benches and the goals once it gets painted.
Awesome. Okay, well, thank you all very much for that. Looks great there.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to old business, item A, which is considered the expenditures as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory and Tree Board for the RC track. Con?
Good evening, everyone. Well, we spent the last few weeks looking over what you guys requested, how to go back and try to find another spot for the RC track. We went and looked north of the BMX track. Bruce was out there and measured and the biggest area he could get that didn't interfere with the BMX track, the Hammerhead or the boundaries was 147 by 140 feet. So Alex is needing 140 by 200 for full size for his track and everything. So that even wouldn't fit for what we're needing. So we're going to recommend that we go ahead and move back to the roller rink. We went, did as much research as we could. If you guys are wanting, we got bids on what it would cost to run electricity and water to a new location if that's what you're wanting. We, I called KE Miller Engineering. They said to just start out by shooting an area about by 200 to 200, it would cost us $1,000 upfront and then we'd have to go and see how much it's going to cost to bring dirt in for a new area if that's what we were to do. So there's just a lot of money upfront to spend if we're wanting to move somewhere else versus the roller rink. So I don't know if you guys had any questions on that or...
Tom?
I talked to the mayor before. I come up with something that I don't know whether it would work or not with the existing skateboard rink and then the equipment there for the skateboarders. Look at maybe moving all that stuff to another park south of where the baseball or the basketball course just went in, maybe across the road. Didn't know whether that would be feasible for park board and that would open that whole area up for the RC track.
So if we moved all that though, wouldn't the track still be on top of some concrete? Or the...
That would be, I mean, we could do it that way or, you know, if you moved the skateboard equipment, could you put it there and maybe move? I don't know. There's some concrete there, but I don't know how much. I don't remember.
There's a pretty sizable pad there for that. I don't think it's quite as big as the roller skating rink. And with that being there, we'd have to make some sort of access road down there so I could drive vehicles back there, heavy equipment, that type of thing without tearing up a bunch of grass and I know there's some utilities ran right in there.
My concern is we keep putting stuff in that park and ain't no room and it makes it so it's real inconvenient to use one thing because something else is going on and if we can move something to another area and it's, the skateboard park doesn't make a lot of noise, so it could go somewhere like Poston or somewhere like that. And I just, I'm throwing this out as an option because that way we can keep that utility that we've got in the park, but it would just be somewhere else and it would free up that whole section there.
But if we were to move the skateboard stuff, I think we'd still have to pour a brand-new pad to put all that stuff on, so...
I understand that that would probably be required, but I don't know what it would cost and I don't know how feasible it is, but it's something that you could take down and put back up somewhere else and then it would open that whole area up.
I also do believe, I don't have the map with me, but I do believe that there is for your disc frisbee golf, I believe, right across there. If I was to make that 200 by 200 or 140 by 200, I think that would interfere also with the disc golf courses as well.
See, that's where I'm getting at. If you put it in, if you put in what you want to, is it still going to interfere with the disc golf?
Not at the roller rink area.
Well, and I'm not saying not use the roller rink area, I'm just talking about moving that whole skating utility out of there and putting it somewhere in another park. So just trying to throw an option out there that allows us to keep something, only put it somewhere else so you can do what you want to do up there where noise is not a restriction.
Okay. Ben?
Maybe, I'm just trying to understand here what's being thrown out there. Are you suggesting, or would the suggestion be then that the tracks still go in over the roller rink, but then move the skating part to a different park to create more room there?
Depends on whether the park board and the council wants to keep that slab there or not. If we don't want to keep the slab there, then take it out. I don't know.
Okay, but they...
I don't know what the options are or what the benefit is or the liability is either way, so...
I would just suggest there on, I mean, I know that you all have spent a lot of hours and time on this there. The idea would be not to eliminate the concrete pad, but to be able to put dirt over it and it'd be about 30% of that concrete pad. I know you all looked into the thickness of the pad to see how that would look.
Bruce checked on the thickness and it's six inches thick, so it's plenty thick enough to drive the skid steers on it when hauling in the dirt without having to worry about cracking it. But yeah, we, I think it would be a good idea to keep the concrete pad just in case we do get down the road and this doesn't pan out, we still have our concrete underneath.
So let me jump in here real quick. So the last time you were here, you had a recommendation, we were going to tear out part of that pad and then go ahead and put dirt on the other part of the pad and then the council really sent you back to see there was a different area for that. So are you coming back to do the same thing? Are you now saying not tear any of the pad out and build the track on top of it?
We're saying the roller rink is our area in the town, but we can, we think leaving the pad will be okay.
I think we can leave the pad, you know, if that's a big concern and I understand the initial cost of that was big to the city. I understand concrete's expensive. So I've talked to a couple of track builders and stuff of that nature on how to get that to natural grade and natural drain. We were talking about it on the way here, possibly putting a little bit of sand on top of that actual concrete and then from there putting dirt on top so when that water does go through the soil, it's going to the sand and it's running away instead of just pulling up on top of the dirt.
So really your change that you're coming back now with is that we still stay on top of that pad, but you're not going to tear any of it out and just build the track on top of it?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Ben, do you have anything else?
No.
John?
I just, I guess I'm just going to reiterate what I said the last time. I just hate to see us get rid of something, an asset that we already have to add another one that we're just not sure 100%. And my other issue is this is going to be ran by another person and we've seen the BMX track started as a different company or different folks and it's changed hands and I'm sorry, I mean, we rely on volunteers in many ways, but they're just that, they're volunteers. And if it's not something that we actually are maintaining or taking care of, because if this gentleman, you know, his endeavor is to get an RC track in, if he gets it in there and he loses interest or something doesn't work out or someone gets hurt down there or whatever it may be, it's our track. And when they're out of money or they need more things done or they need a tractor or they need a mower or they need different things, it's going to be us. And I mean, we've heard how many times that the BMX track isn't mowed or isn't taken care of, so we're, we've at times had to send city labor out to take care of it. I just feel like this is another strain to put on the current personnel that we have. Plus, we're getting rid of an asset that we already have that we can use as dual purpose down there. It's a roller rink. I get it, it's not used all year, but can we turn that into the pickleball or the whatever the other functions, the other things are that we've talked about? I'd love, it's great, I'd love to have an RC track somewhere, but I just feel like we don't, we don't have room right now. We need more room, we need more land, we need some growth area for the parks. I just don't feel like pinching something else out is a good way for us to conduct business.
Anybody else? George?
Well, the skateboard park, you know, I go back a long way, so I remember Kathleen Woodard worked very hard on that many years ago. My two grandsons were helping her. They're grown men, moved on, but a lot of work and a lot of care went into building that and I'd hate to see it go by the wayside. If we move it, if it goes, I would hope that we can find a place to put that skateboard park. In fact, it was named after Kathleen Woodard and, you know, you'd have to go back and all those years and remember just how hard they worked. That's been there quite a few years. I'm not sure how many years. I know my grandson was a young man and he's about ready to retire from the Marine Corps now, so it's been there a few years and I don't want to see it go.
I just wanted to clear some stuff up and just make sure everybody's on the same page. So nothing is happening with the skateboard park, it's just the roller rink. And then, you know, Tom has made the suggestion that the skateboard park area be relocated to another park to maybe help free up some space in that area. But the asset that we're talking about getting rid of is the roller rink, but it does not affect the skateboard park. Okay. Tom?
I was going to say that rink does get used. There are kids from other towns, adults from other towns that come into here and play hockey up there and roller blade. I know several people that have taught their kids how to roller blade up there. So, I mean, you go by there and it may not be anybody on it this afternoon, but tonight there could be 10 people on it and that's a resource I hate to see go away. That's why I suggested maybe moving it to another area. I don't know if maybe, I don't know much about, I know what Osage Park's like, but I don't know if there's enough room down there for maybe the RC thing.
No, not at Osage. I think that's kind of our least amount of space we have available.
I understand where you're at. I'm just trying to take something that we already got and maybe put it somewhere else and so we can free up some space for that, so, okay.
Okay. Jim?
I want to listen to the park board here. I think they've got a good idea. We've got a group of guys here that are willing to bring in some of their own money and they have a new idea and we've already seen some feedback from the community that they'd like it. So I only have to go have my own personal experience to go on and I've never known anybody that used the skateboard park and we have some people here that want to use it and there's, there's some synergies to the racing that goes on in Park City already that this would tie into. It's a change, it's something new, it builds excitement. I'm fine with this. I'm open to Tom's idea of, you know, resituating the roller rink somewhere else, but I'm in favor of what these guys are proposing.
Tom? To build on your idea, I did talk to Bruce. He said the entire roller rink is made up of 57 sheets of plywood and he went out there and examined it in great detail and he said 47 of those 57 sheets could be replaced and his suggestion is if you're going to do that many sheets, you might as well do them all. So if, to replace all the wood and get it back in a good shape, if that's the plan, what I'm saying is why not move the roller rink, I guess?
I agree.
To a different park? Is that what you were saying earlier or the skateboard park?
Yeah, no, I'm talking about both of them. Take the, the kids that go play the roller blades don't necessarily use the skateboard part or the skating part of it, but if you have that whole resource somewhere, then you've got both opportunities there at the same spot. And so what I was saying is if you do the hockey rink and put the skateboard park next to it or the equipment.
Elsewhere. I got you.
But then the frame and everything's still good. I know the wood's bad and it goes bad. There's been a couple scout projects that rebuilt that and I think the city's done it once. Maybe you go back with a different type of material, I don't know. If you moved it, you could do that.
Yeah.
And as far as a six-inch slab, I don't think you need six inches, probably four inches would cover that up there.
Oh, definitely. Yeah.
You know, if I might chime in?
I'm just trying to throw an option out.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page now.
Okay.
If I may chime in, one of the, one of the things, that news article that came out on, I believe it was Monday last week, well, anyway, once it came out, I'm going to tell you, my phone has exploded with people that are truly excited about seeing something of this nature in Wichita and in Park City. I probably, once that was released out in the public and it got into the right channels to, for the RC community to see it, I think I was up till about 1:00 in the morning explaining what was going to happen and possibly going to happen, I guess, not going to happen, but something of that nature and it, there's a lot of excitement. There's a lot of excitement.
Okay. Ben?
And I would add just to the fact that concerning the portion that's coming in from private entities is about $15,000 worth of either equipment or donations. So I think there is a vested interest just in that and a commitment that's going to come to caring for this just based upon the fact that one individual, one company's putting up, willing to put up to 10,000 and another one's willing to put up to 5,000 of their own personal equipment. So I think it's going to just by itself lend itself to someone taking care of and investing and making sure it's not just gone by the wayside. You know, the feedback that I've gotten and we all got the one, you know, from individuals here in town supporting this, I think the thing to this is that it's going to bring in, this has the opportunity to bring revenue into the city through tournaments and such like that. You're going to find individuals using our restaurants and maybe if they're two-day tournaments or whatever, staying in our hotels. And so we're going to be recouping in a sense or we're going to be receiving back some of those funds there that we're going to be put out there for and that's something that the roller rink doesn't do. We might get some people out there and like I said, and I would have to echo what Jim said, I've not seen anybody out there on it. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen. I haven't seen it there. So I don't want to say if you did, then, you know, you're wrong. I'm just simply saying this is, this is a, an asset that we can have that will actually have the opportunity to provide good back to our city in the area of revenue. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the expenditures as recommended by the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, Tree Board for the RC track.
You want to read that motion?
Yeah, let me get to that one. Okay. Move to approve expenditures as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Tree Board for up to 10,000 for an RC track to be paid out of the 2019 Parks and Recreation Budget contingent upon sponsorship and land approval.
George, did you want to second?
Yeah, I'll second that, the discussion. I know you guys have put a lot of time and effort into this and I appreciate that, the fact that you went out there and measured it and did all the behind-the-scenes stuff. I think it's, as far as resources coming into our community and folks' families, as far as amenity, being able to participate in that in Park City, I think it's a go for me to see the kids come out with their dads or with their moms, with their families. It's in Park City, so I think it's a win-win, so I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Doug?
I got a question for you. I would think we would need to have an agreement with them as such that we do with the BMX Would you agree with that?
I do.
So I would ask that the motion be amended to include upon the agreement of a track operation with the council.
Yes, I would.
George, I'll second that.
Okay. Tom?
I would support the amended motion as long as park board will look at the existing facility that they're getting ready to remove and try to salvage the metal out of it so that it could be moved somewhere else. Maybe it's stored for a year or something before we do something with it. But, I mean, we've got a lot of metal work up there that goes around that rink with the gates and stuff and I don't know how it comes apart or anything else, but if we could save that so we could put it somewhere else on another slab and then have park board pursue at some point moving the skateboard park somewhere else and free up that additional area, because I can see if this goes, you're coming back wanting more space.
Okay. George?
Well, now, we're not agreeing that it's going to be at that spot, right?
Yeah, we are.
We're agreeing that it goes on top of the roller rink.
You know...
The motion, not the skateboard park. There's, people have been using both terms. The skateboard park stays where it is, it's the roller rink is where the track is.
That's not my concern. My concern is, you know, we got, we got that BMX deal up there that's on and off. We got baseball tournaments, all that stuff. We got limited parking up there and, you know, I just question the location because I've seen that problem before where you get so much stuff up there, people got nowhere to park. You have a tournament there, some of these things, you know, you don't have no place to park people.
Yeah, I would agree that we have to work on better communication with a calendar that's shared between everybody where information is constantly updated on that. But I want to touch on a couple of things real quick that's kind of been said tonight. So people do use a roller rink. Let's not discount those people that do. People will use it as an RC track. The BMX, I'm sorry, has not done in years past what it said it would, so let's not also say that this is going to bring in 10,000 people a year and everybody's going to be eating in restaurants because that hasn't happened with our other stuff. So just know you're trading one thing for another and people use both. Doesn't mean it's a bad idea, but let's not get into the fairy tale land that all of a sudden this is going to improve economics in the city because of this track. John?
I mean, I guess I'll just reiterate what I said earlier, but I do agree with George about the parking because, I mean, you're going to be, you've got three entities now up there. Now, prior to the hockey rink, you would have maybe two or three carloads of people with five people in each one, so there's not a lot of parking places taken up. This is going to be separate people in each car, then you have the BMX track, then you have baseball tournaments and when these things go at the same time, I mean, are we expecting them to do all their work on their track and then have nowhere to park? Because I'm telling you right now, that place is taken up just about every weekend from Memorial Weekend through Fourth of July with the baseball and with BMX. So right now is the time to tell him if he's going to have nowhere to park because you're going to have conflict if this is done at the same time because they need a place to park too. And then, just like what happened with the BMX, we get asked two years later or three years later to spend $10,000 or $8,000 or whatever it was on rock to get out to their area and for people to park and it's still not enough. So just remember, I understand people are pitching in private money to do this, that doesn't mean it's not going to cost us anything because it will.
And I think just on one of those costs too is handicap parking, which was another big thing that we had to add at the BMX track, you know. So we do need to keep an open mind that other things may come up.
Bathrooms? Trash cans?
Just remember that. George? Okay. But I will say, just from a city's perspective, we need to do a better job with a shared calendar that can help facilitate some of the stuff that we do have in the parks. I mean, we've had those growing pains when we've done a limb day or we've scheduled something in the park and then we can't do it because we find out we've got two other things going on in the park. So we need to do a better job communicating in that arena, so... George?
Do we have anyone who regulates who does what when up there? Do we have anyone that schedules stuff?
No, because each entity is kind of scheduling their own thing and that's where we kind of need to work through and coordinate better.
I'll just ask the question, is that time we got a rec director here in this city? I'll, I'll just ask the question, is that time we got a rec director here in this city?
Probably about two years ago, yeah.
Okay.
I would have totally agreed with that. And one thing we would see too, if we had that, we would be better off on a lot of ways, especially when we talk about just making sure facilities are taken care of and up kept. We're, we're relying on volunteers to do a lot of that stuff, so a rec position would be extremely valuable in our current state. And it could also help with us having more control over those things that are, that are in our parks.
I think it's something we ought to look at.
All right, I'm on that. Tom?
George just brought up what I was gonna bring up, 'cause the rec director'd be up here talking about this and talking about the options and what we could do in other places and, uh, wouldn't have to be a full-time position, but, uh, maybe somebody in the city ought to have that, I don't know. Again, I'd like to try to save what we got and look at moving it down the road. And I expect Park Board probably to bring something back on that sometime, whether there's any interest or not, any interest, I mean, we set up and we don't have all the facts, but we gotta kinda look forward or look out for our resources, so, anyway, that's it.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by raising your hand. And that passes 6-1. All right. So Doug will need to work on an agreement before we can get started or move forward with anything. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That brings us to item 9A, which is case number Z 2019-01. This is for a rezoning amendment requesting a change from the current present C1 Central Business District to R3 Multifamily Residential District. Before we proceed, I'll ask the council members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from discussing and voting on this case because they have conflicts of interest or a particular bias in the matter. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions in this case?
I have not.
Okay. I now ask the council members if they've all received the copies of the unapproved minutes from the Planning Commission on February 18th, 2019, which summarizes the hearing on this case.
Yes.
Okay. After the zoning administrator's report, I'll ask the applicant and the public who may wish to speak in this item. I now call on Dana Walden to provide us with a beef-brief background on this report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this address should be very knowledgeable to the council. As you are aware, this is the location that was sold by the city. The express purpose for the purchase at that time was for senior housing. One of the things that was very, um, uh, important to them was the proximity to the senior center. So those things made it a very desirable for senior housing. And, uh, this is a project that is moving forward. If you look in the meeting minutes that you received at the hearing, there was no one that spoke at the hearing against this project. And it was approved by, uh, the Planning Commission to move forward and one of the things that was put in this was that in order for it to proceed, uh, we would have to have the plans approved by our building official and Central County Fire Department. We have received plans on that at this point. So would answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Dana? No. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? Not seeing any. Assuming that the council has received all information they need on this case, I will outline the choices provided under the state statutes for council action. By a majority vote, move to adopt the findings and factors and the recommendation of the Planning Commission on the case and approve the ordinance. Your second option is by a two-thirds majority vote, move to override the Planning Commission's recommendation describing details of the findings and factors supporting the motion and attach appropriate conditions, if any, and approve the ordinance. Or three, by a majority vote, vote to return the recommendation to the Planning Commission for further consideration at its next regular meeting with a statement specifying the bias for the council's failure to approve or disapprove the recommendation. Jim?
I don't have any questions, so I would move to adopt the findings and factors of recommendation of the Planning Commission on case number Z 2019-01 and to approve ordinance number? 1056-2019?
Yes.
Okay, and Ben?
I second.
Tom?
I was gonna second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan LaHare?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes 7-0. And that will bring us to item B, which is consider a change order, or a change order for the high-ridge second edition Phase IV water line. Doug? Or, sorry, Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the reason that this is in your packet and the request for the change order is because the engineering for this project was based on information that was provided by the city. The understanding was that a line that this would connect to was a six-inch line and it is not, it is actually a one-inch line. So this is a line that should have been in place the size that we had originally thought. So the change order is to add 108 lineal feet of 8-inch water line so that there will be a proper connection. The amount of this is $8,388. And if you have additional questions other than this information that I provided, our engineers here this evening can provide that information to you if you have additional questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Jim?
One question. Pardon? Just to start by verifying what you said, we thought we were tying into a six-inch line, it was a one-inch line, but now we're gonna back, go back and put in an eight-inch line?
Okay.
Rather than the six-inch line we thought we were tying into? Why the upgrade? Right? Did I gather that all right?
Yes, you gathered that right. Since we have to put in a line, we're already putting in an eight all the way through and it's coming all the way over from hydraulic. This is where it'll tie back into the city system. At some point, if you go and replace those water lines over there in Sunny Slope, you'll wanna replace them with at least an eight, well, it'd probably be an eight. You have better fire protection, that type of thing, so. And, you know, those lines are 50 some odd years old now.
Sure.
They're, that subdivision was platted in 1959. And they, there's a street that stubs out to the north, which is where that water line was supposed to be. They didn't put in that water line, what they did was they ran a service up 100 and however many feet, dropped a meter and tied into the house that was up there. And, you know, this water line that's, you know, pushing 60 years old, probably doesn't have a lot of life left in it. You know, the design life is usually about 50 years in a water line, so.
Sure.
We're past that. So when you come in and replace it, you're gonna wanna put in an eight.
Sure.
So it doesn't make any sense to have 100 feet of six-inch in the loop.
I appreciate that, I just wanted to make.
Sure.
I didn't quite understand, so I, I like the clarification, that makes sense to me.
And the difference in price, it'd probably be a couple bucks a foot.
Ah, okay. Okay, is there a recommendation from the council?
Ben?
I move to approve a change order for NOVAC construction in the amount of $8,388 for a total contract amount of $49,329 for high-ridge, uh, second edition Phase IV water line with the change order to be paid from the utility fund.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item C, which is consider an amendment to sections 3-101 and 3-102 and 3-203 of the city code relating to the definition of cereal malt beverages and deleting the five-day turnaround on the background investigation of an applicant by the police department. Doug?
Mayor and Council, this is a, um, amendment to our existing, uh, code and ordinances relating to the issuance of cereal malt beverage licenses. The reason for, initially the reason for the change is based upon, uh, change in state law which effective April 1 of this year will allow CMB licensees to sell not only what used to be called 3-2 beer or weak beer, but now also beer that contains up to 6% alcohol. Uh, that required a, a different definition and that's what you'll see in subsection D in 3-101. So we are now defining cereal malt beverage to include all kinds of beers up to 6%. And then going forward, issuance of a CMB license by the city of Park City will then, based on this definition, allow the person with the license to sell all kinds of beer up to 3.2, I'm sorry, up to 6% alcohol. Likely, kinda the death knell for 3-2 beer, but. The next change is in section 2, and this was, uh, based upon an observation by Dee and, and conversations with the police department. In subsection H of section 3-202, it used to require the police department to do a, would amount to a background check on an applicant and turn it around, uh, in 10 days. Five days. That's just too short, based upon the requirements that the police department has and, and the obligations it has to, to do the investigation. So that's been removed, um, and so going forward, uh, again, the police department will do it as quickly as they can. But the obligation to get things to us in time to get the licenses issued when the CMB applicant wants them is gonna be on the applicant, not on the police department. The third change is to 3-203, and that's sort of a similar one to the one we just, that I just ended up talking about. There were, in subsection A, uh, there's a requirement that they submit their license 10 days in advance of the meeting at which they will be considered. You know, if they, if they, if they get the application in and the, and, and everything could get done in less than 10 days, it could be considered. Not likely, given what we just talked about, or I just talked about with the, the background investigation, but we're just taking that section out of there, so there is no requi, time requirement prior to one of your meetings. And then in subsection C, uh, there's another five working days requirement in there for the departments to indicate their approval or disapproval, that would have covered the police department, we took that out in the prior section, so we're taking it out again. And that would cover all departments. And then subsection D originally read the governing body will not consider any application for new or renewed license that has not been submitted 10 days in advance. And given that we took that out in subsection, subsection A, we're just deleting the entirety of D. So the, the big news here is the redefinition of what cereal malt beverage is, to allow licensees to sell beer up to 6% alcohol content. And then, uh, the other two sections are just a cleanup, uh, to provide a little more flexibility primarily to the police department when they do background investigations.
Okay, George?
Well, yeah, maybe it's in there, maybe I didn't see it, but does it, does that mean we're gonna start regulating the, are we gonna regulate the strong beer that liquor stores sell? Or are we just, I, I, are we gonna regulate all cereal malt beverage here in town or? 'Cause I know liquor stores sell it.
Well, what, this is, this is contained in the section of the, of the municipal code that talks about licensing cereal malt beverage, issuing a cereal malt beverage license. So that's not, that's not what, that's not what liquor stores have. So the answer is no, this has nothing to do with us regulating liquor stores.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Dee, do you have the order in summary?
1057-2019.
Tom?
I was gonna make a motion, we approve, uh, the amendments as recommended by our attorney, do you want me to read them all or?
Yeah, read that suggestive motion right there.
Okay, uh, I recommend, uh, we move to approve the ordinance, and I didn't catch the number she said.
1057-2019.
1057-2019, amending sections 3.101, 3.202 and 3.203 of the city of Park City municipal code pertaining to the definition of cereal malt beverage and the procedure for processing the application for cereal malt beverage license and repealing the original of those sections.
Okay, is there a second? Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan LaHare?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes 7-0. That brings us to item D, which is consider a resolution determining advisability of paving improvements for Phase 5 High-Ridge Second Edition. Dee?
This item, as well as the next two agenda items, are all related in the reason they're on the agenda tonight. You approved all three of them on November 18th, 2018. We've discovered that the amounts in the resolutions, the authorizing amounts in the resolution, aren't as much as the petitions were. Don't know if they were prepared on a preliminary petition or why, but the, the final petitions are higher, so this is changing the amount to the actual petition amount on each of those three items.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Dee? Ben?
Sure, I'd go ahead and make a motion here to approve, uh, this resolution determining the advisability of make, of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of improvement in accordance with such findings, paving, paving improvements, Phase 5 High-Ridge Second Edition.
And that resolution number, you got Dee?
1023-2019.
And George?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan LaHare?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that resolution passes 7-0. The next item is item E, which is consider, uh, resolution determining the advisability of off-site paving improvements for Phase 5 High-Ridge Second Edition. Dee, could you give us that resolution number?
1024-2019.
And Jim?
I move that we approve resolution 1024-2019 determining the advisability of making a certain internal improvement in the city of Park City, Kansas. Making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvement in accordance with such findings. To be off-site paving improvements, Phase 5 High-Ridge Edition.
Okay, is there a second? George?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan LaHare?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that resolution passes 7-0. That brings us to item F, which is consider a resolution determining the advisability of sanitary sewer improvements for Phase 5 High-Ridge Second Edition. Dee, do you have that resolution number?
1025-2019.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Dee on that? Is there a recommendation from the council? George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution determining the advisability of the making of a certain internal improvement in the city of Park City, Kansas. Making certain findings with respect, respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvement in accordance with such findings, sanitary sewer improvements, Phase 5 High-Ridge Second Edition.
And George, that was for resolution number 1025-2019?
Yes.
Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan LaHare?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salsetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that motion, that resolution passes 7-0. That brings us to item G, which is consider an amendment to section 1-901 of the city code related to the Equipment Reserve Fund. Dee?
Uh, yes, um, I have noticed that, uh, I was looking at the Equipment Reserve Fund. I pulled out the ordinance on that, which was adopted in 1990 and doesn't appear to have been changed since. The ordinance established the Equipment Reserve Fund. The ordinance established the equipment reserve fund and also provided parameters for the spending of those funds. There's a statute on this topic, and our ordinance is more restricting, restrictive in a couple of areas. One of which, and, and the main one to us is that the cost has to be greater than five thousand dollars. The other one is that the life of the asset has to be at least three years. We don't know why those restrictions were put in there, none of us were here in nineteen ninety, um, so I'm not sure of their purpose. One of the things that are allowed are computers and software, but the five thousand dollar restriction kind of eliminates the ability to charge those items there. So I suppose back in nineteen ninety, they might have cost more than that, but they don't these days. I went back and reviewed purchases clear back to two thousand eleven, and there's quite a number of items that have been purchased for less than five thousand dollars, so this, uh, ordinance has not been followed. Uh, I spoke with Dana and Doug about it. We all agreed we didn't really see a need for this restriction, and we would like to get it in line with the practice. So Doug has prepared the changes to the ordinance that are in your packet.
So I got some questions before this, so what we're trying to do is eliminate it, so if we have a twelve-hundred-dollar expense, we could use this fund.
Correct.
So it's not that we can spend more money, it's that we can spend less money. So there may have been some confusion in that.
Tom?
I was going to say, I had an, I had some concerns about internal controls and spending limits and, uh, discussed it with the mayor before the meeting. And each department head has a spending limit, so we still have that in place. And what this does is free up the account. So based on that discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this ordinance.
Do you have that ordinance number?
One zero five eight, two thousand nineteen.
All right, Tom, you want to go ahead and read that motion?
Uh, approve this ordinance in zero, or one zero five eight, you said?
Yes.
Uh, amending section one of nine oh one of the municipal code, city of Park City, Kansas, pertaining to dollar limitations for acquisitions from the equipment reserve fund and repealing the original, uh, section one dash nine oh one.
Okay, Ben?
Sure, I'd like a second for discussion.
Go ahead.
Sure, just real quick, sorry, I glanced over, but the mayor mentioned there that it actually lowers the limits as far as being able to spend. Is there still, what is the requirement change on life of the asset? Or is there one?
Well, the statute doesn't state a life, so we're leaving it, but, but being an asset, it's going to be worth, life's going to be more than a year.
I just didn't know if there was one, but I, I'm all in favor.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
John LaHare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey. Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes seven, zero. That's it for this evening. For the agenda, I have a couple of things I want to talk about real quick. Whenever I get letters from the community that are positive, because there's, there's a lot of negative I like to share. I won't share the individual's name, but we received this in the mail. "I'm a resident of the city of Park City for twenty-eight years now. I want to say how much I, I like the new Park City flag. It's so very smart-looking. It's sleek, it's progressive, it's very much twenty-first century, and I want to congratulate the committee that designed this flag. Reading in the post, 'A symbolism which defines our city and what we are about. I'm looking forward to seeing it in the future around town. P.S., I hope there'll be more cups and T-shirts available for purchase for those of us that didn't make the reveal.'" So I, just from somebody that's been in town twenty-eight years, I think that's very encouraging, uh, when we get those notes. Second thing we just want to talk about is just, uh, new home permits issued. So for the month of February, we issued eighteen new home permits, and we have a total of twenty-five so far for, uh, first two year, or first two months. And we finished at eighty-three for twenty eighteen. Jim? Closing comments?
That's great information. No, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, George?
The only thing I'd say is all the comments I've heard on the flag have been positive, people like it.
Tom?
Just wanted to let everybody know that the Sedgwick County Association of the City meeting is Saturday, uh, in Kechai, for those that can attend. The other thing, I sent the mayor, I, I brought up Rural Water District several months ago, and I got some information back and provided that to the mayor about a month or so ago. Uh, it's quite detailed and something that probably shouldn't, this isn't the right forum, it would all be in like a workshop or something if we talk about it. But I was going to let the city look at it and see what they want to do with it. Cities around us have gone and negotiated a per-acre value versus a unit fee on water. That's something we may want to look at in the future, but.
Just if you're, remember, you're leading the subcommittee.
Yes, I know that.
So have you guys met and you want to come back to the council and talk about something?
We can do that.
Okay.
We can do that.
All right.
But I just wanted to let you know, I haven't dropped the ball. I got something on it, and I was somewhat shocked when I read it, so, but anyway, I'll get with my subcommittee and we'll get back with you. I haven't got anything else.
Melvin?
I'm good.
Ben?
Sure, two things here, just real quick. Today, Wichita State and then obviously our community lost a great leader in, uh, John Bardot. And all that he did, Wichita State making an impact there, I think also is, we're going to see the continued benefits for years to come, not just in the Wichita State campus, in the Wichita city itself, but also in its surrounding areas. It's true visionary, uh, when it comes to public education and the universities, and also for what it takes to make a great community. So, uh, thoughts and prayers are with his wife and son and family members, uh, and the entire Wichita State community, uh, there. And then also, um, something just as a, a event coming up on Tuesday up in Topeka, there's a rally, it's the Kansans for Israel rally. And the reason I bring this up is that there is a movement going on throughout our state, and it's known as the BDS movement. That is the boycott, divestment and sanctions, and it specifically targets, uh, Israel and Israeli companies. And it is something that's very dangerous when we look at free markets and such. And so this is an opportunity, not just to necessarily stand with this nation of Israel, but to stand against these types of movements that seek to, uh, purposely target, uh, a, a company that does business with Israel. So that's Tuesday, March nineteenth, up at the Capitol from eleven-thirty, I believe, is when it starts, so, uh, if anybody wants to make it up there.
Okay, George?
Yeah, it's never too early to think about fishing. Our eleventh annual Park City Fishing Derby is June fifteenth this year from nine to eleven at Chisen Point Pond on North Grove. It's an event sponsored by the city, it's free. Um, we'll have updates, uh, on Facebook, but also Park City posts. So everyone come out, um, there's already people fishing over there, and I appreciate the rock put around the pond. Thank you.
John?
I have nothing. I would make a motion to adjourn.
All right, and Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven, zero.